Mike Van Milligan joining.
We haven't done this in three weeks, but just in time.
Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on sustainable Dubuque.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for July 5th, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Sustainable Dubuque Quarterly Update. I will turn it over to Sustainability Coordinator Gina Bell.
Thanks, Adrian. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council. We're going to do things a little differently tonight because it's a work session. I'm going to make you work a little bit instead of just getting up here and presenting. So, the goal of this session is to look at power dynamics in decision-making and understand what speaks to you in the Climate Action Plan and as people and human beings, as well as decision-makers in the city, to try and figure out what you don't understand but need to understand to continue to be climate champions for the city of Dubuque, and then to connect it to other work throughout the city. And then the outcome would be that heading into goal-setting this summer, you use climate and equity as a lens to determine your priorities. So, I'm not here to set the priorities. I wasn't elected to do that. You all were. But I want you to consider these things and to think about how we can have both "and" priorities and goals so we can meet our climate and equity goals while also meeting the general needs of our residents. So, we're going to start by doing an activity. And if you guys will come up, so you're each going to, we're going to play a game. And so, you're going to have to move around a little bit just at the beginning, and then you can sit back down. But the goal of this exercise is to get four candies of the same color and type. For instance, you want four blue Smarties or four Hershey's Kisses that are milk chocolate in silver wrappers. And then you can talk during the exercise. You can take any means you need to get what you need. And then, once you've got four identical candies, you just can shout out like winner or I've got it. And then you will, first prize gets $500. So, I have $500 bills here. It's fake for people not watching. I'm not so blatant in my bribes. And then, the subsequent prizes are second place gets $200, third place gets 50, fourth place gets 40, fifth place gets 20, sixth place gets 10, and last place gets $1. So, you want to do your best to get your four matching candies and then alert me that you've found your candies. So, when I say go, you can open your bags and start to trade, cooperate, steal, whatever you need to do to get your candies. So, on your mark, get set, go.
We have our first winner.
Thank you. Want your candy?
We have our second winner.
They just kind of came all together.
That's all I have. All the same.
All the same color.
Yeah, all the same color.
I can't.
All the same colors.
Sounds like candy.
I'll give you my red.
But it is not candy.
I'm not going to try.
I got four.
Yeah, I have four of the same color.
What do you need?
Wait a minute.
One watermelon, not cherry. Get out of my bag!
We have our first thief.
Do they have anything that helps you?
Do you have any suckers? All right, I got four now. What do you need? What do you need? I need. I need.
I donate. I'm such a great guy.
Now, do you have any two greens?
I have nothing.
Look, here's a Hershey's. All right, I need another, I need two more Hershey's.
This doesn't like it.
Who needs, who needs some? I need yellow Heichus. What do you need? You guys got any green, anybody got any green Jolly Ranchers? Green. Got any green? What would you like? What can I get you? Oh, I'm sorry. What would you like? Brad, you have a green, yellow.
I got the gift of bad.
Look at this.
But they all have to have the same.
Yeah, they're all the same.
No, no. Yet they have to have the same model inside.
Well, I'm not going to find out.
I got a watermelon. Anybody got a green Jolly Rancher? What do you need, Danny?
I'm good.
Do you want my, do you want my candy?
What can we purchase with this money?
Not much.
Green energy.
What do you need down there, Danny? Or Danny's already got his.
I'm good.
Everybody good?
He was, he was giving it his spoon. It is not, right? Silver spoon, like being the Easter bunny, isn't it?
Like, we're all really quiet.
That is good.
I feel terrible.
Can I give you my heart?
Those are the rules, though.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't like sweets.
Don't spend it all in one place.
I am failing.
What in the world? What do you need?
Kind of good. What do you need?
You need a root beer?
No, I kind of feel like the system might be a bit rigged at the moment.
What do you need? I got Hershey's.
What I'm trying to pull off?
Yes. Heichus. I got two Heichus.
Because every time somebody tries to offer me something.
Here's two Heichus.
Heichus, there you go.
Thank you.
Never heard of them.
And I have two chocolates.
And I've got a root beer.
Give him the two chocolates as well, and that makes four.
This is for fireworks. You can't, you can't use fireworks.
Third base.
Is everybody done?
If you hit a triple.
I guess. I was like, wait.
I did, yes. I think I was four.
Oh, man.
But there weren't any gummy bears. Nina, where were the gummy bears?
This, this was just a stock photo. I'm sorry.
You guys seem really excited for gummy bears.
Okay.
I was looking for gummy bears.
So, step two is to reflect about what you've just experienced. I handed out papers. There's, depending on what you like, there's a blank side or a lined side. And I'm just going to ask you to do a silent reflection. I'm going to play some music and answer these questions. So, think about what you're feeling, what you just experienced in the exercise. What gave people more power than others to win the game? How did the reward match those with the most power? Or what gives some people more power than others? And how does it link to real life? So, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes, and you can jot down your thoughts. Okay. These papers are just for you. I'm not going to collect them at the end, so you can be as honest as you want. If anyone wants to share your welcome too, I want to provide space for that, but you don't have to. I just wanted you to have a moment to consider your power and agency in shaping the future of our city as it relates to climate action and many other things. And some of you started out with the correct number of candies to win, and others did not and had to figure out a way to get them. One of you started with no candies, just the smell of candy. And so, I want you to consider how some people need to work harder to win the game. And in short, I guess I'm asking you to consider how your power impacts the decisions that you're about to make as you go through goal-setting and beyond. Did anyone want to share?
Sure. I was the lucky one, I guess. I got all, I had all four in the same color. And as Mr. Resnick said, born with a silver spoon. That was not the, not the case. I kind of missed out on, I wanted to trade. I wanted to do that. I was like, dah! So, it's kind of boring to sit here and watch. I was really looking forward to that part. And I wish I had gotten five or maybe like six, then I could like gave them to somebody else because I didn't need that many. So, it's fun. Thank you.
So, I thought it was fun because I gave away most of my candies as well until the very end when I was rescued by Katie, who gave me a green Jolly Rancher to accomplish my mission. And then Rick had one hanging, and I just grabbed it. So, I definitely accomplished my mission. But I had more fun empowering the others to, winning was not winning. For me, it was just getting to have, the group have empowering the others as well to share and to give.
I would like to say that you set the rules, and you just said, do whatever it takes. So, that's what I did. I, the exertion of raw power, and I went over and I just took it from somebody else. And so, I call that me see, me take, right? And so, that's, it's ruthless. I get it. And I did acknowledge it at the time, didn't I? I said, I'm, I'm taking this. I said the quiet part out loud. And yeah, I mean, I suppose that's how it works sometimes as well. You know, you really want something, you, you know, you set up a competitive type of thing, and then you make the rules. And I feel like I followed the rules. I'm not proud of myself.
I think it's interesting to see, you know, we're all kind of helper people. You know, once we achieved our goal, we could, we wanted, I wanted to go and make sure everybody else got to their goal too. But I realize that in society, that doesn't always happen. You know, you get what you need and like, great, we're, we're good. And then it stops there.
So, I started with nothing. And one of the things that struck me right off the bat, and I recognized it when it was happening, is I started with this moment of paralysis. Like, well, what do I do? I don't have any idea what I'm supposed to do if I have nothing in the bag, right? And I watched everybody go and trade their own thing. And what's interesting is, I ended up with a lot of candy, but not what I needed. Nothing of what I needed. In fact, there was a moment where I thought I was going to get four chocolates because somebody said, oh, I've got chocolates. And it was the philanthropists among us who were, you know, able to give us what, what they had since they already had what they needed. But, and they handed me what they thought I needed and then kept on walking. And I'm not blaming anybody for this. It was just sort of like, that's the way the game works, right? But I got three chocolates still instead of four. So, I only have three. And I was just struck by the, you know, how I've seen this happen in real life too, how sometimes people need help to be able to get to a certain goal, but they don't make it to that goal. People, they might get one, access to one program or some resources over here, but not what's really necessary to be able to do what's needed. And that's exactly what happened to me in the game. So, I have a dollar.
And three chocolates.
Did you get four candies, though?
Yes. What's that?
Did you get four candies to match?
No. I mean, no, I never got a single.
So, I want the dollar back.
It's right here waiting for you when you're ready for, come back. No, it was interesting. It was very interesting.
I too have some ill-gotten gains on auditing my booty here. Three of these are watermelon and one's cherry, although they all look alike. So, I got to give my fake $10 back as well.
Two cheaters among us.
But I started out with, with three pieces, so I didn't think I was a competitor. So, I thought maybe I can help somebody else get there. And then the Easter Bunny Laura came along with a basket of candy, helped me out a little bit. Katie helped me out a little bit. So, as, as has happened throughout my life, with a little bit of help from my friends, things get better.
So, I had a bag with a whole lot of different candies, but not too alike. And my first reaction was, this is fun. This is a problem solver, right? So, actually, kind of felt bad for Danny. Even though he was in first place, I was like, well, he doesn't even get to play the game. Yeah, sorry, Danny. But yeah, definitely, the people with the most obstacles came in last. Well played.
Well, thank you, everyone, for, for playing and going a little bit outside of our, our normal work session. There are more reflections, so don't get rid of your papers yet. So, when I think about climate action, I think about for whom. And different kinds of climate action have different costs and benefits for different people. Because of this, choices about what courses of action to pursue are profoundly shaped by relation to power. We live in a world marked by severe disparities of wealth and power, many rooted in histories of colonialism and exploitation. And these disparities have often allowed powerful companies and individuals to dictate the course of climate action. This has made it very difficult to pursue measures that might threaten their interests, but by which would dramatically reduce emissions. An example would be banning fossil fuel exploration. So, instead, we, and this is the global we, not just in Dubuque, we have a slew of measures that address climate change, but rely on making emissions reductions profitable. But the quick ways to reduce emissions aren't always the most profitable. And what is most profitable can often be harmful for less powerful people and communities. So, I hope that this is not too flippant. I don't mean to be disrespectful with this meme, but memes have gotten me through some really dark times. And I think they're horrifying and also funny. And so, I want you to think about our earlier activity and all of us as decision-makers. How are we treating people that are asking us for help? Are we giving them high fives and celebrating them and then continuing on? Are we giving them three chocolates and moving on? Or are we actually pulling them out of the water to help? And so, again, recognizing your power in this decision-making, and I want to be here to support your efforts. We have this great plan that intersects a lot of our work. And if you don't understand something, or I can be of service in helping you understand or feel a connection to it, that's what I want to do. So, Dubuque has this long legacy of sustainability. A lot of it was initially led by Mayor Buell. Many of you joined in, and now all of you are on board. And we need this continued leadership and legacy to create our sustainable, resilient, and equitable community. And it's easy to think that individual actions don't matter. I, I live there a lot. And it's true that 77% of global emissions come from 100 companies. But we also have to remember that individuals make up systems and that individual actions do matter. And many people don't know that there's a problem or don't feel connected to it. So, it's that connecting to the problem that is important. And if we've learned anything in the past week, we know that greenhouse gas reduction is going to be up to cities. And cities can lead the way because you can make these decisions at this local level that have a trickle-up effect with a large impact. And it's, it's critical both as an ecological standard, as well as to advance equity because climate action and equity are interlaced. All right. So, when we think about climate action, and Dubuque's been working on this since the early aughts, we have this urgency-based thinking. I've stood up here and said, this is an urgent problem. We are in crisis. And approaching things with an urgency like this requires extraordinary measures and seeking quick fixes instead of addressing root problems and causes. And so, we have to ask ourselves, what values are we upholding by always responding with urgency? And so, Adrienne Marie Brown suggests that we take a deep, slow breath and do intentional work and connect to our humanity. And so, I want you to take the sheet of paper that looks like this, and I want you to connect to your own humanity and think about the people that you love or care for deeply. And you can write them down. You can write down their names. You can write down why you love them or care for them deeply. And then I want you to take it a step further and think about what are some potential climate risks, either that they're currently experiencing or they could experience. Or if they don't have any impacts, off the top of your head, think further down the line. Think about a global crop failure. And so, they might have money to buy flour from Target or Eagles, but if there's no flour on the shelves, what will they do? Do they know how to harvest acorns and make flour? Do they grow their own food? Or what are the economic impacts because of interruptions due to climate change? I'll play some more music. Okay. So, hopefully you, you can fairly quickly name people you care about and, and have even potentially thought about what climate impacts they may experience. And so, with this, this is how we're going to connect to our humanity. And so, these are the people I want you to think of as you're making your decisions, as well as all of the residents of Dubuque, because it's going to impact them as well as everyone. So, then we look at, okay, how do we do this? So, here is this lovely Venn diagram. It's in our Climate Action Plan. And it looks at where climate mitigation actions and climate adaptation actions meet. And so, mitigation is to reduce greenhouse gases, and adaptation is making changes to address current and future realities. This is our resiliency work. And so, in the middle there, it talks about where there's overlap. And then, my stretch for you all is, as you get your list of all these priorities that city staff have focused on and went through goal-setting to think about and to lift up, what, what meets here? And where can we have both green infrastructure and something else that they're asking? It's, it doesn't have to be one or the other, but they can, they can both be there. And then, a lot of these will be meeting our climate action goals because we'll be building resiliency. We'll be preparing our residents for future climate impacts, and we'll be doing our fair share to reduce greenhouse gases. So, it's not all on you. This is a community-wide plan. It's a massive plan. And these, this is our executive summary. This lists all of our climate action goals broken out by sector. And Julia and Grace, the summer interns in the Sustainability Office, are going to share their efforts on engaging the community. And hopefully, that will get the community involved and taking their part in actions. And then, we're going to talk about what you all can do in terms of the Climate Action Plan. So, I'm going to have them introduce themselves and share what they've been working on.
Hello, I'm Julia Stearman. And my first goal for this summer was to move the Climate Action Plan out of the large and intimidating document and make it more accessible to the public. So, I started by updating the Sustainable Dubuque website with some like brief overview of the information about the plan, the emissions inventory, and the vulnerability assessment. I also included three action areas that mimic the plan's kickstart strategies. And you'll see yours later in her presentation. The first is highlighting those and what the city has already accomplished and just what they can do in the future. And then, the second is what individuals can do, directing them to various resources. These tasks were also made into physical cards, like as well with like QR codes, so that when people ask us, what can I do? The answer is just like a scan away. And the third is what businesses can do, also providing various resources for them. And I'm working on reaching out to businesses with like a physical flyer and a survey of this so that businesses can report back if they've taken any of these actions, while also gathering information about their feasibility and giving support if they need it. I also added Climate Action Plan information into an activity and coloring book so that kids can learn what we're doing to affect their future. But now, I'm focusing more on setting up events to get community members involved. The first is a low-carbon diet competition that follows the program in this book to reduce 5,000 pounds of carbon in 30 days. I'm in the beginning stages of a test run with neighborhood associations, so they would like compete against each other for a possible prize. And I have all the materials for this, for like anyone to do this independently on the website as well. So, full of templates and schedules for them to complete it more easily. And then, the second event is a Complete Streets bike ride with the goal of educating community members, generating support, and getting the like 56% of the community that belong to groups not well-served by a single passenger transit and the 25 that are particularly poorly served accustomed to using neutral mode transportation. But it's still in the early stages, and I hope to address more of our climate action plans with this as well as we continue developing. Hello, I'm Grace Khan. I will be a senior at Cornell College in the fall. I'm studying environmental science and sustainability with a minor in civic engagement. So, the first project that I've been working on this summer is a tree giveaway. The Sustainable Dubuque is partnering with Dubuque Trees Forever and local nurseries to provide rebates for trees. We will be presenting an info session about how trees impact climate action and the basics of planting trees. We are giving away $10, $250 rebates and $100, $125 rebates. Rebates will depend on income level and highest heat island areas. So, you can see in this GIS map, these are the areas that we are going to be focusing on for our outreach to include equity into this event. And we will be submitting a press release for this soon. The next project that I've been working on is a Circles Book Club for All We Can Save. We will be hosting this at local restaurants around the area for a meal and a climate action discussion. I've been working on a binder filled with instructions on how to lead the session, follow-along handouts, journal prompts, key terms, discussion questions, supplemental materials in connection to climate action. The last project that Julia and I have been working on is a business proposal. It outlines goals and objectives for reducing carbon emissions by 50% by 2030. It outlines business, carbon reduction, and sustainability checklists, why carbon reduction and sustainability matter, how to decarbonize, and some research on return on investment. If you have any questions about any of the projects we have been working on, feel free to reach out because we would love to share more with you.
Aren't they awesome? All right. So, everyone has a role to play. These guys, their work is really focusing on the community part. And then, we also need your help. And so, this is really a cheat sheet for all of you. So, this is in the Climate Action Plan. This is listed on our Quick Starter page in each section. But implementation actions are the detailed actions that need to be completed to meet our 50% by 2030 reduction goal. And many entities play the role, and you all play a role in, these aren't the only actions that are assigned to you in the Climate Action Plan, but there are some of them. They're the ones that we want to see first. And some of them have already taken place. So, I'm not going to go through, this is a lot of words on a, on a slide. I'm not going to go through and read them all, but I just wanted to show you sort of how to navigate it. We've got the, the higher level goals at the top of the page, and then a few Quick Starter actions that actions that all of you can consider as you're going through goal and priority setting. So we have Buildings and Energy, Transportation and Land Use, Solid Waste and Recycling, Water, Wastewater and Flooding, Climate Health and Safety, Food, Green Space and Tree Canopy, the Climate Economy, and our Climate Action Capacity. So it's a lot to read. You can do that in all of your free reading time. I know you guys get all sorts of things to read. But it doesn't have to happen all at once, but the sooner we act to reduce our greenhouse gases, the better off we all are, as well as the surrounding communities. So as a final reflection, I want you to think about these questions, and you can go ahead and jot it down. And there's some lovely research about actual, the physical act of writing and tapping into your emotions. And so that's why I'm asking you to actually write and not just think. But think about what excites you about climate action from a human-centered approach. Thinking about those people that you love or care for deeply, what are you excited about? How can you, using your power, advance climate equity for vulnerable populations? What opportunities exist during goal-setting to support projects or programs in those overlapping areas on the Venn diagram? And what do you need to better understand our 50% by 2030 plan?
I don't mind starting. Sure. And it all relates back to our first exercise. If you would have said, if the rules are that everybody needs to win, and we can share the spot, we could have come together in a city council, figured it all out, and say, we all win, because we could have done it. And then, because that's what a city council is used to doing. We're not really all out for power individually. So, but that emphasizes of what you talked about and what your interns are doing and in your department is bringing people together. I think that's the way to do it. Because a couple of questions I had is, you talk about using your power. It's like, really, power? Well, obviously, on the city council, but of course, we get the power from our citizens, right? And we also have, sometimes the state of Iowa seems to change that, and then the federal government seems to change that as well. So I mean, what can we do? I think we can talk about it and get together and do what we can. But did ask, bring up a quick question. I don't know if this is off the topic, but did the recent rule of the ruling of the city, of the Supreme Court, is that going to greatly impact our work here in Dubuque? That's just a question that I have. I'd love to hear sometime after we get through with this. Thank you.
I was thinking about something the mayor said earlier, and it is understanding what people need before determining your solution to how to help them. And sometimes we get in a hurry to get to that solution, and we need to think about before we do that.
And so my thought was kind of more overarching in some respects, because what we do today is a small step for what we're doing for future generations, right? So, you know, kudos to the interns for putting all of that documentation together to help others take small steps, also to encourage mindfulness, if you will, of the fact that we are in a ever-evolving, climate-changing environment, which we can experience microclimates in one day here in Dubuque, which never used to occur when I was growing up. And a good example was yesterday with the horrendous rainstorms and then the beautiful sunshine, et cetera, that came upon us within 12 hours, right? I mean, it's pretty devastating in some respects for that fast movement. So I was more concerned about and appreciative of the fact that it is one step at a time, but it's a recognition, it's an awareness, it's an appreciation that we can be good stewards, no matter what we're doing, and try to be as environmentally aware as possible. So thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Bev.
I don't work in, directly in, I guess, the environmental realm, but I take care of people, and their health and their wellness has a lot to do with their environment. And so I don't claim to know what you and your interns know, but I am blown away by your excitement about what you do. It gives me a lot of hope that, you know, we can raise children in a way that they prioritize these things, because they'll be the next leaders to make those decisions. And so I see, I'm a little bit on the statement that Mr. Resnick had, in that it's strange to say you have power, because I really do feel that my constituents already have contacted me with amazing ideas about the environment in our own community. And I'm really grateful, and I'd like to just encourage anybody who's passionate about the environment to help provide me any information that you have that's specific to your neighborhood or your park or any of those small steps, because I learn a lot from those encounters. So thanks, guys.
Yeah. I guess I learned from all this, Gina, is I always take away empathy, because this, you never know what you have till you don't have it, and when you do have, you can either help others. So I always try to have empathy for the situation, especially when people have issues with transportation, air quality, access to quality food. So thank you for reminding me that. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
You kind of said it all in your introduction with the recent Supreme Court action and other federal action. This is going to be up to cities. Pretty much globally, it looks like it's going to be up to cities to take the steps that cumulatively will make a difference. And I'm glad that we're off on the right foot, but I can see that we've got miles to go. So everybody should immediately do what you can, and then dream about what we can all do together, and start to fabricate that into the plan, and away we go.
Yeah, and I would say that I got stuck on the first question the most. You know, what excites you most about climate action? And there's just two things, really. The first is that it's all possible to actually solve this problem. It's not an intractable, unsolvable problem. The only thing that stops us is we can't agree. Really, what stops us is just being human. So you said from a human-centered approach, it's the fact that we just can't agree on things, but in a large scale, because it's about our entire planet versus just our own community. But then you take what, it kind of hits on what Mr. Jones just said, you know, the other thing that excites me the most is that I think that here, on the local level, we have the very most real possibility and ability to do something and take real action. And I'm seeing that all across the country in local government, is that we are the ones that are moving things forward, and it seems like the levels above us at the state and the federal level are the ones that seem to get stuck in the arguments about how we're going to get things done. So I have a question about that, and we get to questions too, but that's, I think, what excites me the most.
Well, I want to express my gratitude. I was not expecting you all to share your reflections, but I'm really glad that you did, because everything that I was hoping to come from this, you sort of nailed on the head. So thank you for that. And I just want to offer one final consideration. I'm just going to read it. It's an excerpt from All We Can Save, an essay by Colette Pichon-Battle, who is one of our keynote speakers at the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference. And the essay is titled "An Offering From the Bayou." And she writes, "We must have the courage to admit we've taken too much. We cannot close our eyes to the fact that the entire world is paying a price for the privilege and comfort of just a few people on the planet. To survive this next phase of our human existence, we need to restructure our social and economic systems to develop our collective resilience. Collective resilience means developing cities that can receive people and provide housing, food, water, healthcare, and freedom, no matter who they are. Cities can use climate migration as an opportunity to rebuild social infrastructure rooted in justice and fairness and physical infrastructure that works to restore and preserve our ecology. We must invest in more justice, but it cannot be for temporary gain. It cannot be to help budget shortfalls. It has to be for long-term change. We must honor the rights of nature. We must advance human rights for all. We must transform from a disposable, single-use, individual society into one that sees our collective, long-term humanity, or else we will not make it. The good news is, we come from powerful people. And you all are powerful people." Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Gina. And Julia and Grace, thank you very much for being here. And I want to thank you specifically for coming to Dubuque for the summer and giving us your time and your talent. We really appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so questions and discussion. We have some time here. We've got a good 15 minutes that we can use. All right, I'll start. So, because I have a question that's really burning, so I'll get to everybody else, but I just, I have to know this. We are, it just feels like we have so many challenges all the time. And the Supreme Court decision was just the latest version. It's a big one, but it's the latest one. And, you know, everything that I'm reading about it seems like it's really just kind of pulling the rug right out from under a lot of efforts that people are making. But the other thing that I think about all the time is, okay, yeah, there's always kinds of challenges, but what are the real opportunities right now? So for us in Dubuque, you know, as we think about goal-setting and from where you're sitting and the work that you do, what should we be looking at as the real opportunities that we could really go after and make a real impact? Because we could fight, you know, the, we could ask, you know, Crenna to fight the Supreme Court decision or something, you know? It seems like insurmountable challenges, you know, those kinds of things. So what I want to know is, you know, if we're going to go after something, we're going to make a real impact, especially, you know, with the things that you've laid out here for our climate action plan, what are some of those things that we should be thinking about?
Yeah. I think, I know I sound like a broken record, but I think if we really start to look at Complete Streets, like we have a policy, we need it to be more comprehensive, we need it to include maintenance, we need to have documentation about why we're including certain roads or why we're not. And it addresses so many things. It addresses health issues, it addresses transportation issues, it will greatly reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And it's really great for businesses. So I think that that's one big one. And it's massive, like in and of itself, it's a huge action. So it's not just like, oh, Complete Streets, we're good. But I think that that's a good starting place, because it does, it impacts almost every resident. People need to get to grocery stores, they need to get to jobs. It needs to be more than just about cars. And then when you see active transportation, you see healthier hearts, you see kids that are, or you see decreased mile, vehicle miles traveled, and then air quality improves. So there's lots of sort of interconnections with Complete Streets. So that's a big one, I think. If you look at housing density, we like to expand and have big, wide-open spaces, and green spaces are great, but we also need to really look at how are we going to continue to meet our housing needs that we have and increase density? And things don't need to be giant sprawling areas. We can fit a lot of housing and great housing into small areas, and we can make sure that it's going above and beyond the energy code that the state allows us to do via incentives or some other thing that the city can implement. And some of it gets into legal battles, and so we have to find ways, and there are creative ways around that. But I would say those are probably two really big ones that I'm thinking about, and as we're bringing on a new person into the Sustainability Office, they'll be focusing a lot. We'll continue to do our energy efficiency work, because that's also, you know, we want to reduce the amount of energy we're using. And so we've got our great Green Iowa team, we want to continue to work with them, but then also looking at what does it mean for not just individual households, but businesses or manufacturers, and how can we help them and support them in their energy efficiency work?
Great. Thank you very much.
I can keep going on if you want.
Well, it's a good, it's a good starting list.
Those are the big three. We'll take those.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Parva.
So you mentioned the overall importance that we all contribute to the climate action, and you specifically mentioned businesses. Do we at this point in time have, or will we have, or is it in planning for incentives for corporations to be more focused on energy efficiency, climate action, what they do with recycling? I mean, you name it, there's just enormous things that they could be doing, electric vehicle fleets, et cetera. So is there, and what is there that we're doing?
We're in process. So we're working with a manufacturer here that is sort of our test right now. Julia and Grace have done some great groundwork, and, you know, some of the incentivizing is that if you implement energy efficiency, you save a bunch of money. And so we don't even need to provide anything outside of the city. We can say like, hey, we can help you, talk you through this. One thing that I'm finding in my discussions with some businesses is that they just, they don't have the knowledge or the time to do it. And so it's like, if there's an easy button, I'll push it, but we need to make the easy button. And I will say, like, a lot of it has been limited capacity. Like, these guys have done so much work this summer that wouldn't have gotten done if it had just been me. And as we're bringing on a new person, we're doubling the capacity. And so I do think that a lot of those conversations, like they're laying the groundwork, and then we're going to be able to start reaching out more and more. And I do think it's sort of a domino, where like, once we get a couple on board, then more will come and say like, hey, we want to do this too.
Good, thank you. And it's one step at a time, I realize that. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate this work session, and good timing, good time for us to think about all these things as we go into goal-setting in August. So thank you very much. Oh, I do have one more question, actually, real quick. The cheat sheet that you gave us, the PowerPoint one, these are all things that still need to be completed from the Climate Action Plan, correct?
Well, there actually, as I was going through, I was like, oh, we have a restore.
Some of them, okay, good.
You don't have to worry about that one. We, there are a couple of other ones, and I can follow up and cross those out. We're not going to take them like out of the printed Climate Action Plan, but we have an implementation spreadsheet that they're marked as complete. But most of them are, still need some.
Got it.
Some work.
All right, good. Glad I asked. Well, thank you very much. Well, thanks again, and there being no further business in this work session, we are adjourned. Well, thanks again, and there being no further business in this work session, we are adjourned.